Good evening, Chair. Calls to order, public hearing for Bill 24-009, zoning cannabis dispensary council. We have Mr. Shane Grimm with us this evening from Planning and Zoning whenever you're ready, sir.
Good evening, Council President Vincenti and council members. Thank you for having me here this evening to speak on Bill 24-009. This bill is to permit cannabis dispensaries, retail dispensaries in the county, and this is a result of legislation that came out of Annapolis previously. And what this legislation does is makes retail cannabis facilities permitted in the B3, general business, and CI, commercial industrial districts. The legislation that came out of Annapolis previously basically said that jurisdictions cannot make unduly burdensome regulations or restrictions on these types of uses. So that's where we started with. A lot of this is taken directly from the state's bill down in Annapolis. And one of the things I'll tell you is some recent legislation that came out of this session will cause us to have to amend this bill. There's been a lot of discussion down in Annapolis about cannabis retail facilities and how to regulate them, and I think there's still some questions down there. But the latest that we've gotten, two things that I can tell you right off the bat are, one, is they've reduced the distance from 1,000 feet from a pre-existing school, daycare, church, and things like that. They've reduced it down to 500 feet. So we have to make an amendment that says it will be 500 feet. The other one is that I see in there, and we're still looking at this to come up with all the specific amendments, the other one that I see is something that the jurisdictions can opt into, and we'll be talking to the administration about this. The opt-in is you can choose to say that you cannot have retail dispensaries closer than a half mile from each other. So my guess is, is that we probably will be looking at adding that as an amendment as well. Again, and the only reason we're doing that is because that just happened in Annapolis and we had already started this bill. So we'll look forward to working with you all as we develop those amendments, make sure that you understand them. But for this evening, that's all I have on this, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. So the amendments have not been developed yet from over your side of the street?
No, I'm speaking with Shabita about that. We've been in contact and have had several conversations as we go through the new legislation.
Okay. Counsel, questions? Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Grimm, thank you. I know the county is handcuffed on this and requirements are by state. We would have hoped that we would have had enabling legislation to allow the counties to make those decisions, but it's not for the dispensaries. But it is enabling legislation for upcoming onsite consumption, which is going to be an important topic here in Harford County. Has your department or the administrative administration had any conversation about onsite consumption and whether they're going to support or not support those in Harford County?
Not at this time. There hasn't been any specific conversations about onsite consumption, although my assumption would be that the administration would not be supportive of that, but I do want to be clear that I haven't had that, any discussions related to onsite consumption at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Thank you for being here. Do you have any idea, speaking with Bel Air, Aberdeen, and Havertagh Grace, what direction they're going with their zoning in regards to these changes?
Well, they should be following the same. They're required to adopt the same.
And I assume that the rules as far as 500 feet and all that, that is as loose as you can go, but are jurisdictions able to, or I mean, that's as strict as you can go, but are they able to go looser than that?
Yes.
But it sounds-
They can be more restrictive. So usually, it's the other way around.
Right.
But in this instance, they cannot be more restrictive. Usually, like when it comes to environmental stuff, you can be more restrictive on those type of things. This is the opposite.
And then, do you know anything about the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund that will be formed from the revenue that comes from these sales? Is that anything that you have any-
Councilwoman Bennett, I have my hands full with the zoning part of it. I don't want to deal with it.
I just wanted to make sure I shared on the record that we-
Okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I'm not involved in any of that side.
I know the Caucus of African-American Leaders reached out to me. A few counties have developed work groups to decide how that fund will be spent within their counties, and they'd really like to see something like that, a work group developed to talk about what are we going to do once this revenue starts coming in. So I just wanted to speak that into the record. You know, my office is preparing a resolution to ask the county executive to consider starting a work group like that, just so that we have the community's input, you know, very similar to what we've done with the opioid fund, and now we're going to be receiving a fund like that for cannabis. I think it would be good to make sure groups like the caucus and also just citizens across the county have their voices heard in what we do with that. But I appreciate, you know, legislation like this is important and we stay up to date. So thank you for being here.
I apologize. I don't, that's not my bailiwick there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. So do we know how many schools reside within 500 feet in the B3 and CI? That would, this would affect?
Well, it wouldn't affect any pre-existing facilities. It would only be new facilities.
So any new facility would, it could be 500 feet. Existing facilities is how many feet? 1,000?
Well, existing facilities that were, would have been permitted as, in this county, as under a pharmacy because previously they were only medical marijuana, so they were considered treated like pharmacies. So there wasn't any specific requirements for distances from anything for dispensaries that were related to medical marijuana. Since retail sales have come in, that's where it's changed, and it's only the retail establishments that will be new. Anything that was, any dispensary that existed prior to the date, I forget the dates in here, but was in existence, June 1st-
June 23.
Of 23.
Okay, so any new dispensary that opens can be within 500 feet of a school, correct? The way the state wants it?
Correct.
What if we don't adopt the way the state wants it?
I think that's a question for the Law Department. I think the folks in Annapolis were very clear that the local jurisdictions could not be unduly burdensome, and they're very clear in the language of this legislation that says they shall not, must not make it any more restrictive. So Mike, that would be a question for the county attorney, and I'm not sure what would happen. I'm sure the state would have something to say and weigh in on that, but I don't know how that would happen.
I got you. Thank you.
Mr. Pennman?
I just want to follow up on Mr. Jan Giordano's comment. Based off the Mako discussions and some of the meetings we've had, there are currently five dispensaries in the county. Harford County will be receiving eight, in the information that I've received. Those eight will be determined by a lottery in the state. It's 178 total that are going to be added to the pre-existing dispensaries. So to answer your question, I think there's three, but I don't know that we know exactly where they're going to be within the county that's going to be on a lottery base, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
And just the conversation about 500 feet from a school. In zoning, is there ever a distinction between an elementary or secondary school and what's allowed within so much distance from an elementary school versus a secondary school versus a college campus? Is that something that zoning ever delves into? Just because it seems like when you think of a dispensary or a liquor store, there's a different concern being near teenagers versus being near five-year-olds. Is that something zoning ever gets into?
Not in Harford County. I'm sure maybe other jurisdictions have done that, but we don't differentiate between, you know, an elementary school, you have to be this distance, and a high school, no. We don't differentiate that, but it could be like that in other jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie?
Seems we're lacking some information or lacking, talking about amendments and whatever else that's coming forward. I see the bill sitting in here, in our binders here, 24-009, and dated March 19th, and public hearing on April 16th. Where do we stay with the bill itself? I ask that question. Maybe I'm confused, which is very possible. I mean, we're having a public hearing this evening.
And we're proposing that amendments will follow based upon what the state just passed. So this will remain the same except for the few amendments that we have to change with regard to distance.
Okay, that you'll get from the state, and then they'll become the county's amendments, I assume. Is that what we're saying?
They're in the bill, they're in this bill, House Bill 805, which was passed, that says 500 feet. We have 1,000 feet in our bill, so we have to make an amendment to say 500 feet.
So we can't say 600 feet?
Correct.
We can't amend it?
500 or less.
Well, I hope they don't come around and-
We can decline it. I'm not going to vote for it.
Well, it's a good point. Yeah, because, you know, these bars, basically, they want to open up. Of course, we're all opposed to that, and so I hope we don't, I hope the state doesn't try to force that down our throat because it's going to be a big fight.
Is that it, Mr. Guthrie?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There's no one signed up, Mr. President.
This will conclude the public hearing for Bill 24-009, and we'll await your amendments. And it will be considered at another meeting, and this will, we're going to take a short Good evening, Chair. Calls to order legislative session day 24-013. Please join us in standing for the pledge followed by the opening prayer by Councilmember Bennett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Yesterday's history, tomorrow's a mystery, but today is a gift, and that is why it's called the present. And for this gift and all the others you provide us, we thank thee, oh Lord. Amen.
Agenda item number four, presentation of proclamations. We have none. Five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. We have none. Six, special presentations. We have none. Seven, approval of minutes. Public hearing, April 9th, 2024. Legislative day 24-012, April 9th, 2024. Closed legislative session day 24-012, meeting April 9th, 2024. Ms. Dixon, can we have a roll call vote on these minutes?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Giordano?
Oh.
No abstaining?
Yep. Thank you. There being six votes and the affirmative, one abstention, the minutes are approved. Mr. Giordano, please read Resolutions 01024, 01124, 01224 into the record for introduction.
Resolution 10-24, Height, Bush, and Gunpowder Rivers Replacement Bridges, introduced by the council members, by Councilmembers Guthrie, Bennett, Riley, and Jan Giordano. A resolution of the County Council of Harford County, Maryland urging Amtrak during the construction of new replacement bridges which cross both the Gunpowder and Bush Rivers to raise each bridge to the highest feasible height in order to expand better, to expand boater access in those waterways. Resolution 11-24, Adoption of Property Tax Rate, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to levy and impose a property tax upon all persons for real and personal property in Harford County, Maryland, both within and without, within and without the city of Havertagh Grace and the city of Aberdeen and the incorporated town of Bel Air in the county. That is subject to the ordinary taxation in accordance with Article 15 of the Declaration of Rights of the Maryland Constitution, the Tax Property Article, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Chapter 123, Article 1, Section 123-15, 123-16, and 123-27 of the Harford County Code as amended, for the purpose of meeting all of the estimated county expenses for the taxable year beginning on the first day of July 2024 and ending on the 30th day of June 2025, and set, and to set the rate of county taxation for such taxable property and year. Public hearing scheduled for Wednesday, May 8th, 2024, and Monday, May 13th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the East Council Chambers. Resolution 12-24, Fiscal Year 25 Capital Improvement Program, introduced by the council, by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to adopt the capital program for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2025, June 30th, 2026, June 30th, 2027, June 30th, 2028, June 30th, 2029, and June 30th, 2030. Public hearing scheduled for Wednesday, May 8th, 2024, and Monday, May 13th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the East Council Chambers.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine, introduction of bills. Please read Bills 24-012, 24-013, and 24-014 into the record.
Bill 24-012, SOPP Amendments 2024, introduced by the Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An Act to Re-Appeal and Reenact with Amendments, Section 29-1, Harford County Sheriff's Office Pension Plan of Chapter 29, Harford County Sheriff's Office Pension, and to re-appeal and reenact with amendments, Section 3.2, parentheses D, Credit for Prior Law Enforcement and Correctional Service, Section 4.5, in parentheses B, Participation and Contributions Limitations, and Appendix B, Deferred Retirement Option Program, Section B, dot 2, applicability and eligibility of the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan as incorporated by reference in Chapter 29, Harford County Sheriff's Office Pension, and all of the Harford County Code as amended, to permit the purchase of credit for prior law enforcement and correctional service, and to increase the maximum number of years of participation in the Deferred Retirement Option Program from five years to seven. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the East Council Bill 24-13, Gilt Fees, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An Act to Re-Appeal and Reenact with Amendments, Section 157-3, Applications for Licensed Contents Refund of Fees, Section 157-16, Building Permits, Section 157-17, Plumbing Permits, Section 157-18, Sanitation Construction Permits, Section 157-19, Utility and Public Works Permits, Section 157-20, Electrical Inspection, Section 157-21, Grading and Erosion Control Permits, Section 157-22, Stormwater Management Permit, Section 157-24, Licensing and Certifications of Registration, and 157-30, Mechanical Permits of Article 2, Chapter 157, License and Permits of the Harford County Code as amended, to repeal Section 157-27, Food Service Facility Fees, and Section 157-29, Public Swimming Pool and Spa Permit of Article 2, Chapter 157, License and Permits of the Harford County Code as amended, to add new Section 157-31, Highway and Storm Drain Plan Review Fees of Article 2, Chapter 157, License and Permits of the Harford County Code as amended, and to re-appeal and reenact with amendments. Section 173-8, Fees of Article 2, Licensing of Trailer Camps and Mobile Home Parks of Chapter 173, Mobile Homes and Trailers of the Harford County Code as amended, to revise current fees and establish additional fees for service rendered by Harford County and generally relating to permits and fees in Harford County, Maryland. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the East Council Chambers. Bill 24-014, Annual Budget Appropriation Ordinance, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. The annual budget and appropriation ordinance of Harford County, Maryland, to adopt the county budget consisting of the current expense budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, the capital budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, the special purpose budgets for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, and the grants budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, and to appropriate funds for all expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025, as hereafter indicated. Public hearing scheduled for Wednesday, May 8th, 2024, and Monday, May 13th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the East Council Chambers.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10, introduction and consideration of amendments. We have none. 11, call for final reading of bills. We have none. 12, enrollment of bills. We have none. 13, unfinished business. We have none. 14, new business. County attorney requests to approve settlement of notice of claim. May I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Guthrie?
I motion that, I make the motion to approve settlement and notice of claim.
Mr. President? Mr. Pennman?
I think it was, you moved on to 14, new business. We should have been on unfinished business. Agenda item number 13.
I said that. I did say unfinished business.
I think you said new.
We're fine.
But that's probably where this item would be better served.
Okay, so you want to go back to unfinished business?
Well, the claim was new business last week, so it should be considered unfinished business.
Fine. Then we'll go back to 13.
And that's what I have it under, that's why.
Okay. 13, unfinished business. County attorney requests to approve settlement of notice of claim. May I have a motion, Mr. Guthrie?
Council President, I make a motion to approve the settlement notice of claim.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. It's been moved and seconded to approve the request for settlement. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to explain my vote, Mr. President, if that's possible. Before, you want to do it now, or you want to do it during voting?
No, I'd rather do it now.
Okay. So, Mr. President, I'd like to explain my vote in reference to voting for this, voting for this request. I personally think the first responders did an exemplary job in the incident that we're talking about and want to support the first responders and their families. This will secure them personally for any sum that they could be liable for personally. They have enough stress in serving the citizens of Harford County, and I would hope all my council colleagues would support our first responders and vote yes for this request. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm opposed to the payment of this settlement as proposed. I believe it sets a bad precedent to spend taxpayer money simply to avoid the cost of litigation. This could have a rippling effect on claims against the county going forward, and I believe that this settlement is not in the best interest of the taxpayers of Harford County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
I just wanted to say that I've really wrestled with this vote, and I think everybody on the council knows that in our, you know, one-on-one conversations. But I just wanted to make sure everybody hears us. I think everybody in their vote is thinking about our first responders and what's best for them and looking out for them, and whatever direction you vote, I think that's the lens all of us are looking at this from, and I think that's important to recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have difficulty understanding why the county would be entertaining a settlement based on this request with no justification. There has been no civil suit filed and no justification provided from the requister. Looking back into March 14th of 2023, the county executive spoke to the council regarding potential lawsuits. The county executive said something which I agree with, which is as follows. I mean, look, are we going to stand up for the citizens' rights? Are we going to stand up for the future of the county? Are we going to do the right thing? Or are we going to cower and say, oh, my gosh, I don't want to be sued. I'm sorry, I can't take the latter. Sometimes you got to stand up and do the right thing and not be too. Don't worry too much about every consequence. We are going to give you good, solid, solid legal advice. That's what we pledge to do. So the question I have is what's changed? Why are we not fighting for what's right, supporting our people, and why are we not fighting for the taxpayer dollars? Therefore, I can't support this settlement.
Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Digging as much information that I could get because when I, last Monday, when they dropped all this paperwork on us and then we had a viewing over the sheriff's office of actually the events, I didn't have enough information to attack this or vote for this last Tuesday, so I asked for the delay, and that's what we got. And yesterday, myself and Jim Riley and Tony G., we went down, we made an appointment with Kevin Kopinski, who is the attorney at the federal level, who wrote this nine or 10-page brief on the case. We went down there and interviewed him for a couple hours and listened to the reasons for this and both, on both sides of the street. It's clear that I also support 100% of what all those deputies did. If I was in that situation, I would have done exactly what they did. They had a subliminal message sent to them that had to be in their mind the whole time this whole event was going on. And having a son retired from, and of course, I'm not comparing him to my colleague here who's on the police department, but my son spent 20-some years on the Baltimore City Police Department, and we had lots of conversations about things and close events and stuff that happened that where you got such little time to react. And reading the state's, the state's attorney's letter on this subject, she said the time that they had to react was two seconds. Two seconds. You know, whether you don't know whether the guy is going to shoot you or you're going to, or what's going to happen, that's exactly what these people, these guys had. They had two seconds to make a decision. So I support everything they did in regards to looking at the whole subject and looking at what it's going to cost and looking at what my experiences in, over the years and some of the, some of the payoffs you've seen all around the country, the Freddie Gray case in Baltimore, they peeled out $6 million before anybody even filed a charge or a case in Baltimore City. They peeled off 8 million, $6 million, and then, and then took all, six policemen, tried to take the six policemen to court over that, and of course, they threw four of them out and they gave up on the other two. But look what it did to those, every one of them wind up leaving the police department. And my son, when he saw that, he was only a block away, and he could have been involved in that. He was a sergeant at the time and retired lieutenant, and he could have been involved in it. And he said as soon as his pension stuff came in, he was getting out too, and that's why they've lost so many policemen because of that kind of stuff. So looking at this, this can, this easily could run into the millions of dollars, without question. It's one of those kind of cases that everybody's going to have to be deposed, probably six, seven hours for every one of them. It's very costly, there's attorneys, and for us to be able to get away this easy at this time for the taxpayers of the county, that's why I'm going to be voting in favor of the, of the payment, because if you don't, you're going to go to court, and this thing's going to take two or three years, and I have no idea how much money it could cost the citizens of our county over that period of time. This is, nobody's making any, you're not, you're not admitting any wrongdoing here whatsoever, and all the other, and all the policemen will be exonerated from this, so. And out of the question, this will be over, and I can't see putting everybody through it, so I'll be voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Giordano?
Thank you, Council President. I think after meeting with the attorney downtown, and I was out last week, so I wasn't able to sit in a closed session, but number one, this attorney that's bringing, and hasn't brought against us, the case has signified that if we do not settle now at this point for the dollar amount which the insurance carrier has stepped up and said they will provide $650,000 out of their own pocket to settle this, and the county's cost will be $350,000, that the next, the next amount goes to $5 million. And if it then goes to court, he's going to sue for $25 million. So on top, on top of that, I mean, everything I read, the police officers did everything that they should have done, done it correctly. My biggest concern is punitive damages for a police officer if this ever goes to court. There is nothing that protects the police officer's monetary- There is nothing that protects the police officer's monetary income from being attached. Um, I did look at USCCA in case that police officer had a policy with them. They have a specific clause in there for law enforcement that excludes what they do. A homeowner's policy doesn't cover what happened here. So, he's then opens himself up to financial hardship. They will attach his wages for 10 years. After 10 years, if it's not paid, they'll go back and attach it again for another 10 years. So, on top of, if it goes to court and if for some reason, and it's going to go to federal court, and my question was, why does this go to federal court? Well, it goes to federal court because they're going to use the Disabilities Act for mental abuse, and it's going to get put down in a federal court. If one juror doesn't vote our, the, the way, then we lose, then, then we've got to pay out whether it's 5 million, 15 million, 20 million, 2 million, it's more than $350,000, but then they can go after the officer. This way, if we do this, there's no admission of guilt, okay? The case is closed and it's, and it's done. So, um, that's what I'm going by, I'm looking at that, I'm looking at the officer, I'm looking at his, his pocket and his life for the rest of his life, that he's not going to be burdened with a payment, um, for, for this, for this event. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Mr. Riley.
Yes. First off, again, as most of you know, I'm a retired police officer, so I bleed blue, but I looked at the, I looked at the, the attorney that's got, actually going to, oh, represent our county, has 30 years' experience, including claims of police use of force and death cases. Uh, most of the people that will be selected, will be selected not from Harford County, they would be coming from other areas of the states. Uh, they're much more willing to find against the police now more than ever. It's simply a function of the shift in the attitude of the, of the citizens of the state of Maryland, which I don't appreciate myself. Also, in reference to what, uh, Councilwoman Boyle Sodows said, it's, the gentleman that's going to litigate this case says it's going to cost somewhere between $800,000. So, we would only pay 350, not 800,000. So, it will be really less for the citizens of Harford County. But above all that, what I look at is punitive damages. I've been on the street, I've worked the streets for 24 years, and I want to tell you something, there's enough stress going on in the street that you don't want hanging over your head for the next three or four years that they could take your house, your car, or anything your own if they decide to, to go for punitive damages. And so, on behalf of the Sheriff's Department, on behalf of the deputies, I plead my council members to please make sure that you vote for this so that the officers that are involved, and there's many of them, two specifically, but many of them, plus also our dispatchers, that you at least leave them of that stress, that they know this case will be over once we vote tonight. And so, I plead with my council members to please make sure you vote for this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sodows.
Thank you. Um, respectfully, I disagree with my colleagues tonight. This is all based on a letter that was sent. This hasn't been a lawsuit. I, I don't see a lawsuit. It's a claim letter, demand letter. Now, anybody can send a claim letter, demand letter to anyone at any time, and as a business owner, if I just pay that claim letter on the demand, I probably wouldn't be in business. There hasn't been any negotiations, and this is based on a claim letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodows. Anyone else? You know, I hesitated to have anyone speak this evening, and as I'm sitting here, I'm getting text messages from the county executive. And, um, I just think that this is still a very tough decision to make because as legislators and members of this council, we have a fiduciary duty to spend the taxpayers' dollars wisely. But at the same time, we have a responsibility to our men and women in blue to make sure that we protect them each and every day to the best of our ability. Because as you've heard here tonight, they're put in situations every day to where they have to make split-second decisions. So, uh, I'm, I'm challenged with which way I'm going to go on this, extremely challenged. Um, but if there's no more comments, Ms. Dixon, call roll.
Mr. President.
Pass.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
No.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
I plead, everybody vote yes.
Mrs. Bull Sodows.
No.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. President.
I'm going to vote no, but there's passes, four to three. Um, I hope that, um, I hope that, um, we get exactly what we're looking for. Um, 14 new business, we have none, 15 business from the president, I'm going to hold off 17 comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President, we have two this evening. Tina Graff, followed by Diana Sodowski.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Uh, Tina Graff, 1732 Boggs Road, uh, Farceville. Based on inaccurate information shared by our county executive yesterday during his televised interview, I was excited to learn that we would have a half hour before the meeting started tonight to speak about the budget. Fortunately, I found out early enough to change my comments, so I'll address something else that's been bothering me. Maybe I'm barking up the wrong tree tonight, but I'm hoping that you can voice my concerns to the appropriate people. It's the Harford County Government Social Media Account. As one of your constituents, I appreciate that you and your office have embraced social media as a crucial means of interacting with the public. Many of us rely on Facebook for a quick snippet of what's going on locally in our community, and I love seeing the Harford County Government site posting pictures from the Department of Emergency Services, Health Department, Library, the ARC, APG, Downtown Alliance, I could go on and on. But when it comes to HCPS, the posts are few and far between. I'm going to use the word budget, but only in the context of everyone continuing to tell us that HCPS makes up over 50% of the county's budget, yet we rarely make it to your Facebook page. Our students and staff and parents deserve to be celebrated for all of their accomplishments, but posting anything about us is rare. In fact, just scrolling through the last two months, the only posts on your page pertaining to HCPS are about the budget and one of our incredible Patriot Program celebrations. You forgot that we celebrated our awards and excellence last week, recognizing our Principal of the Year, Teacher of the Year, and many other awards. You forgot Aberdeen High School's band won grand champion in national contest. You didn't advertise all the plays and musicals that are open to the public and performed at our high schools by our students. You forgot to post that Dr. Bolson was named Superintendent of the Year and also elected to the National Education Governance Board. HCPS posts many wonderful things daily, and you repost none of them, yet you repost almost anything else that occurs in our county. When I questioned why nothing was posted about Dr. Bolson winning Superintendent of the Year, the response I received was that the county executive attended and congratulated him in person. My list could go on and on. Personally, I would like to see all of our accomplishments alongside other vital programs that make our community one that people want to live in and be proud to be a part of. Additionally, the proofreader needs to be fired. The amount of grammatical and spelling errors is embarrassing. Also, there's no option to see all the comments, and many are censored, although there are claims they are not. Repeatedly, after a post is made, the comments are published sporadically with no rhyme or reason to how they are approved. I've seen vile remarks made, public, yet some are hidden for reasons I don't understand. If the budget for our schools is over 50% of the county, please advocate to have 50% of your posts about the schools as well. Our kids deserve the same recognition as any other entity. And please, for the benefit of all of our citizens, someone please speak with our county executive about what he posts on his personal page. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Good evening, Diana Sodowski, 1113 Stromco Drive. I'd like to thank the council president for the offer of a meeting, and since he went on record and mentioned me by name, at the April 2nd council meeting, I'd like to go on record today and decline that offer. What I have to say I'd like to state on record in these chambers, things set in private have a tendency to simply evaporate into nothingness or be misrepresented, and I want to avoid that. I'm all about facts, fact-finding and speaking them as well as abiding in rules. Council President, you've asked the citizenry to refrain from using the names of our elected officials. That's your prerogative, and I respect that. However, there was a glaring misstep on your part in last week's council meeting during comments and input from attending citizens, and yes, you did address that before this meeting with me, however, I need to speak it. One citizen mentioned our county executive's name five times. Another mentioned the county executive's name once, and the previous county executive's name once. Not once during their three minutes did you stop them from mentioning those names. So, again, if you're going to establish a role in this chamber, I can respect that, but you're being wishy-washy. And I wonder, do certain citizens or advocacy groups garner different roles or are granted allowances than the common folk who stand before you do? I know I'm just somebody's Grammy, but right is right and wrong is wrong. I'm not afraid to boldly raise my voice for honesty and truth in the face of injustice and deception and greed. I stand up for what is right, I speak out against what is wrong, and yeah, I'm that somebody's Grammy who can with others create a ripple effect of positive change that can transform the county. So, Mr. Count, Mr. Council President and council members, y'all need to sleep on this one, and have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
All right, we'll go to agenda item number 16, business from council members. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first, I want to congratulate, uh, Eric Richardson, uh, she's, uh, Teacher of the Year, uh, out of Joppa Town, uh, lady I've met numerous times over there, she's, she's great with, uh, kids and, and great with, for the community, and, uh, I really like to congratulate her. Um, also, uh, uh, on Friday, uh, myself and, and, uh, Councilman Pennman toured Deerfield Elementary School. Uh, I'd like to thank the, with Wade Sewell, too, and, uh, I want to thank, uh, Principal Dunlap who, um, took us around the school, and, um, she even still had, she still had the shovel that, uh, I don't know if I used that shovel, but I was there when we put the shovel on the ground and rebuilt that, uh, elementary school. Uh, but I still, I told her what I missed, and I would love her to go back and, and do that, because I really, what I really liked when I went in that school before they rebuilt it was in the ceiling towels, all the ceiling towels that are in the ceiling, they would take one ceiling towel for each graduating class, and they have all the kids sign them, you know? And they would put graduating class such date, such, and put it back up in the ceilings. And when you walk down the main hallways, you'd see all those ceiling towels, and I thought that was the neatest thing. And when they rebuilt the school, they threw them all out. Uh, that was, that was really sad, I thought maybe they would put them all back. So, she said, yeah, that was interesting, and maybe she'll go back to doing that, but, uh, but we'll see. Uh, also, uh, decided to go to Joppa Town High School, I had their bingo, big, big bingo night, uh, Friday night, and, uh, I took my wife on, on monologue, and went to, uh, the bingo, and we really had a good time, there was a lot of people there, but I found out when you win, you've really got to be vocal because the, a lot of times you tie. I, I won one game, we had 20-some games between me and my wife, and then we won, I won one time at the very end, and I'm afraid I got out screened by some women because they, they couldn't hear me. It's a couple of women hit it, and we were tied, and they screamed, and, uh, so I would probably gave it to them anyway, but it was, it was a very enjoyable night. Harford Square, they had a cleanup on April 30th, uh, I was there for a little while, but I couldn't stay long because I had another, uh, event I had to go to. Uh, with that, um, Mr. President, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just want to speak, I sit on the Traffic Safety Advisory Board. Uh, one of the issues that has been taking place is the school bus violations. Uh, the numbers that I recorded are 2,164 violations since January, uh, that's probably a, uh, just a little over a half million dollars from fines. And it, as much as, you know, we like the money, we'd like to see that number go down. I don't think people really understand when they need to stop for a school bus. Uh, there's a median in there, you don't, but if there's no median, uh, you have to stop for a school bus. So, I think hopefully there's some educational outreach, uh, to try to make, uh, the community more aware. Uh, Mr. Guthrie, I mentioned about the school tours, I've toured the schools in my district, and I, and now I'm in the process of touring some of the schools outside of the district just to kind of understand the complexities of each school, whether they're a priority school or a district school. And I do want to compliment, um, um, the board of ed rep for District B, Wade Sewell, he's been great, uh, he's been visiting these schools, and he provides, you know, great perspective on things, so, uh, and congratulate, uh, teacher Erica Richardson for the Teacher of the Year. So, with that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Janjordano.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I want to thank everybody for all their well wishes and concerns over the last week. It, uh, kind of was sick, knocked me down for about a week, um, I finally started feeling good, probably Sunday. The only good thing that came out of it was probably lost eight pounds, so, um, that, that's not a bad thing as long as you don't gain it back, but, um, ribbon cuttings before this was, uh, Crescendo Financial Group on Atwood, they opened up, uh, um, so best of luck to them. Uh, Doglissious Donuts on Main Street, they're, they're down in the, they're down in the basement if you're looking for them. Um, so, uh, my dog, uh, she loved them, um, but, uh, they're pretty big for a little dog, there, there's a lot there to eat. So, anyway, congratulations to them. 10th Annual SIAB, uh, Society of Italian-American Spring Gala was held on April 6th, they gave $25,000 to the Ed Lowly Foundation, so congratulations to, uh, Ed Lowly Foundation. And Bel Air had, um, its 150th anniversary, ring a bell for Bel Air was Thursday, April 11th. Um, I wasn't able to attend, but my legislative aide, Joanne, thank you for going out there for that since I was still sick. And then the farmer's market opened this past Saturday, they're going to be open from now until, I think, October, 8:00 AM to noon, across from Vagabond. And finally, a very happy birthday to John Rosaski, another SIAB member. So, John, happy birthday to you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Riley.
Yes, first I'd like to say to our first responders, I just want to let you know for sure that we all up here on the DS support you day to day, and, uh, we, we know the tough job that you have to do. We might have differing some opinion, but I can tell you without a doubt, all seven of us support our first responders 100%, and I thank my, uh, colleagues for doing that. In, in, in reference to that, I, I went up to the DS, uh, this afternoon, I got a view of a mock session in case, uh, in case there was some kind of catastrophe that happened in our county, and I saw our first responders and our administration and work, and I know, Council President, you have a seat up there, um, and, and I want to tell you, they did a phenomenal job, so I thank, again, all that goes on up in our Department of Emergency Services. I, I want to give a shout out to Amy O'Neill, uh, her husband passed away a couple weeks ago. I want to tell you folks, uh, I live in northern Harford County, but a lot of folks were not very populated, but the tent that she had and the celebration she had of life for her husband was bar none. I want to tell you, it was really great, and so, Amy, I want to give a shout out to you, um, and especially for the good work that Jim has done, uh, in Harford County. Also, want to give a shout out to Mr. Tibbs, he will be my, uh, my advisor here during the budget rollout. Um, Mr. Tibbs, you probably don't know this, but I won't be here Monday and Tuesday, I have to work in, in Las Vegas, and so you have to take care of Monday and Tuesday, and I'll do the following Monday and Tuesday. But I want to thank you for your volunteer service and the many years you have done it, and I appreciate you being here Monday, Tuesday in my stead.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sodows.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to inform the public about a new recovery house through Chrysanthemums. It's a, um, home for women and children located in Aberdeen called the Lily House, and they opened on April 1st. Um, the house includes comprehensive case management, mommy and me programs, life and parenting skills, education and career development, and much more. Um, the Churchville Cab meeting is going to be held at Churchville Rec Center on Thursday at 6 o'clock. Uh, I will not be able to attend because I have a new aide, um, and she wasn't here, here tonight, but her name's Tara, and, uh, I'm excited to bring her on board. She'll be there on Thursday, and I think that's all I have. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodows. Mr. Bennett.
Hello, uh, thank you all for being here tonight. Um, I was able to attend the Route 40 Business Association I was able to attend the Route Forty Business Association Meet and Greet that took place at Island Spice, which was a lot of fun and it was good to be there last week. I also attended the Abingdon Bell Camp Perryman Cab Meeting, which again was, I always enjoy the cab meetings, this is a chance to hear from people personally and to have more back and forth and not just stand and speak for three minutes and sit down, but be able to have conversation. A lot of what was spoken about at the cab meeting last time was both about Abingdon Woods, people wanting to see the reforestation of that happen soon because of noise pollution issues and people using ATVs where the trees got cut down and just wanting to have that safety of not having strangers pull up into your neighborhood to go use an ATV in the field that used to be trees. And so that was very important, but also people who felt frustration, you know, having the cab meeting at Abingdon Fire Hall and seeing water fall through the drop ceiling all night because of an issue and, and people feeling that that was a reflection of, of our Abingdon Fire Hall not being properly taken care of by the county government and representative of other issues that then brought up, that people wanting to see the county government take care of them better. So I thought that was an important conversation to have, and of course, I'll be advocating for our volunteer fire departments through this budget cycle, like I hope all of us will be. Speaking of our volunteer firefighters, I went, I attended the Susquehanna Host Company Awards Banquet, which was a great event. Susquehanna's host company is second to none in the state of Maryland and across the nation. They rank as one of the best companies for response times and number of vehicles and personnel who respond on the scene. And I'm always thankful for them and their commitment to our community. You know, they're the people that are next to my home. Abby and I hear them heading out all the time, and we always think of the people who sit in those vehicles when we see them go out. Speaking of fires, there was a fire on the 4300 block in Perkins Place in Bell Camp, and thankfully, there was no loss of life, but my heart goes out to the family that lost their home and to all the families around them that were impacted, just hoping for the best for their family and the community, and if there's any way that we can be supportive, I'll want to do that. The budget came out. I encourage everybody to look at it. It's a lot to look over. There's all the big things that we all know and see right away, but there's also all the little things that the budget does, and I think it's important to keep your eyes on that. As the District F representative, I met with the county executive before the budget ever came out to share my district priorities and just so that we can have that level of transparency with each other. I met with my budget advisor, Dr. Kevin McKinney, tonight, and we began lining up our questions for the budget hearings. And of course, last night, and I'm sure many nights to come, my legislative aide and I started going through the seven hundred-plus-page operating budget, four hundred-plus-page capital budget. So please just keep on the lookout for all that and share any feedback with us. I think that's very important. This is something where we spend a lot of days, I take a lot of unpaid time off to be here during the daytime during this season because we need to. It's important and we need to know what we're doing and know what we're voting on. You know, I'll just share, the biggest thing for me that I hope is different about this budget cycle than last budget cycle is just the rhetoric. I hope that we're able to go through things in a cleaner manner with less messy back and forth and, and spin and disinformation, but just, you know, let's make our points and commit to them and, and support them without going into anything that would be perceived in a negative way. So, but I'm hopeful, and we have two months, and I just hope to hear from all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Agenda item number fifteen, business from the president. I started my morning at the EOC Center this morning, recognizing our call takers and our dispatchers for the service that they provide our citizens each and every day. Wanted to present them with a proclamation on behalf of all of my colleagues, recognizing National Telecommunicators Week. I have a personal connection there. My youngest daughter has been there for twenty years and does an outstanding job. Also, Jeanne and I want to express our condolences to the friends and families of Ray Bent. His wife passed away yesterday, and we would also ask you to keep Mrs. Casely's family and friends and their, your thoughts and prayers. Mrs. Casely's father passed away recently as well. So we ask that you keep the Bent and Casely Russell family and friends and your thoughts and prayers. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting.